Hi, everybody. Call to order at seven oh three.
President.
Here.
Vice President Diane Law.
Here.
Councilmember Shirley Blair Fuller.
Yeah.
Would not here. Councilmember Deb.
Christine Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Andrea Nutella.
Here.
Jay Dorn.
Hey, here.
And Mayor Paul Gammer.
Here.
And before we do public comment, we can do that before public comment or after?
Okay.
All right, we'll move over to a public comment. This for residents and taxpayers are welcome to speak. Please, we have nobody in the room, so please unmute yourself if you are on. If you would like to speak, please state your name, your address, and you have three minutes. All right, well, we are closing public comments since we did not get any hands raised. And we have, before we move on to the discussion items, we do have a speaker. Two speakers today, and we'll start with our first one. If you could please introduce yourselves.
Yes, thank you. My name's John Von Eratson, Senior Program Manager with the Pennsylvania Solar Center. And we've been collaborating with Connect for the past year on solar PV systems for municipalities within Connect. We have twelve municipalities and the Water Authority. Churchill is one of those municipalities. And tonight, we just need to review the sheet in front of you. So what we came to was a group power purchase agreement. So this would allow Churchill, along with the other municipalities listed there, to enter into a PPA agreement with a solar developer. They are BAI out of the Southern Region in Pennsylvania. And basically, they would install the system, or they would work with a local installer to put a system on the borough building as well as the fire hall right next door at no cost upfront to Churchill. And they would sell the power back to Churchill at a reduced rate. Currently, you're paying about nine point seven cents per kilowatt hour. And the initial rate right now is at that nine cents per kilowatt hour. So you'd see an immediate savings. The chart on the right-hand side there is the twenty-five or thirty-year power purchase agreement. And you're saving roughly seventy thousand dollars over the thirty-year term. Now, this is just initial pricing. We think that it could get better, maybe with Richard Brent's money or something else. We entered into the CPRG grant application, and we're hoping to hear back from that probably in the middle of the summer.
You say what CPRG is?
It's the Climate Protection Reduction, or Climate Pollution Reduction Grants Fund.
Thank you.
Yes, of course. So Pennsylvania received a lump of money, and then there were entities that applied for that money. So if we were to be awarded that money, or the municipalities would, that would just reduce the electric rate from the start. So you'd see even more savings than without. So what we're looking for tonight is to just get Churchill on board with a yes to continue moving forward with this developer as we bring other municipalities on board and try to ultimately get a contract signed that group PPA secured. Opened up your question. I'm happy to answer any and all you have tonight.
This is just for the borough building, the fire station, and not expanding anywhere into the neighborhood?
That's correct. Yeah, it would just be all borough buildings. The Pennsylvania Solar Center, we only work with non-revidential customers, so municipalities, school districts, businesses. If you had other sites that you were interested in, we could certainly tour that as well. Probably just make the case even stronger, honestly. The more solar you put up, the lower that initial rate is going to be.
Could our high school be a part of this?
I don't know why not. I mean.
Other schools in the world, then?
Yeah, we work with school districts across Pennsylvania, so we could see about including them in this group PPA, but more than likely, it would be a separate purchase agreement because the school district would probably want to operate on that.
Right.
Just for a little bit of clarity, because I love this actually, I just want to. So the year-over-year projections that you have in terms of the current less profit in the PPA, what are those based on and how is that calculated in terms of the increase?
Yeah, great question. So we're calculating your current annual rate will increase by three percent a year. That's pretty industry standard. We could go lower than that, or we can go higher. I mean, the fact is, over the last couple of years, we've probably seen their rates improve significantly, maybe thirty or forty percent. So you're never going to have that linear projection in real life, but that's the best we can do to assess.
So you calculated it in three percent on the current cost, and then what's the PPA cost?
It's going to be a one and a half percent square, so it is lower than your projected increase with given like.
Is that something that's fixed in that space from you all, or is that just an estimate based on what?
Yeah, so that's fixed. That's the BAI's offer, so they're at a long and half percent, which is actually pretty low. Usually, they'll say about two percent. But they're pretty aggressive to that.
Thank you. The construction of the field, which is there's no cost at all.
Correct, yeah. So what BAI does is, they would own the system, so they would put up the capital to have, you know, a local installer put it up for you. And they would also maintain the system, so there would be no cost to the municipality to maintain the system. And what they're doing annually, with the amount they put up, and they'd also monitor remotely to make sure that the system is producing.
Unless the duration has.
Yeah, thirty years.
But there's also an option, if the borough is interested in five years, that we would be able to purchase them and own them.
That's correct.
Five years?
Five years, yeah. It's set at five years because BAI is going to take advantage of the tax credits and depreciation of the asset, so they'll have to run it in year six to avoid reinsurance tax.
Do they pick the vendor, or does that go out to bid?
It's already out to bid. You can select who you want. So you had three entities bid on it. It was EIS, Electric Medic, and Green Solar. EIS is based out of Pittsburgh, Carnegie. Green Solar is in Greensburg. And then Electric Medic is, I want to say, Steenburtsburg, so it looks more of Santos. The reason why we don't take the lowest responsible bidder is because we'll have to pay the taxpayer funds.
But we get to pick.
You get to pick, yeah. Yeah, but you don't have to select the lowest bidder, yeah. Right, it's a service agreement, so you avoid that. But Green Solar was the lowest bidder, if that, you know, made anything, but they were all pretty comparable as far as price goes.
Should we get any information of their minority-owned or women-owned businesses?
Great question. I would say, out of the three, I don't think any are women or minority-owned. If that was important to the borough, we could certainly put it back out to bid.
How would the bid go out, since you did not contact minorities? So how did you put the bid out? You just put the bid out and you make these specific channels?
Sure, so we have a developer network that we've created over the years. And so we bet the installers that are going to do the work, make sure they're qualified.
Yeah.
And then we send it out to that developer network, and then they submitted this back. And then after those initial bids, we actually put it out to bid again for this group PPA option. So BAI, and there was one other bidder, but their starting rate was around twelve and a half cents per kilowatt hour. So you'd be paying more.
More.
A little bit.
So the service you're going to do is between, sorry?
Yeah, that's okay.
So between BAI and the installer, right?
It's actually between the new and BAI. So you could select who you want to install. BAI would pay them to build the project for the labor and actually kept their margin in there as well, so you could have your choice of who you'd want to select. It was a service agreement between Churchill and BAI.
And BAI was chosen through the RFP process?
Yes, yeah, the BAI, we, it was the group PBA bid after we got the initial bid, because it looked like we could actually make this work with the group of municipalities. And then BAI just came in with the best offer. So that's what we're presenting tonight. I'd be happy to share, you know, the other company, Infinity. They fit together a good PBA, but again, it's going to be about four, well, three cents higher than what you're currently paying order to sell that.
And from what I'm understanding, if this process, making you, and you can give them a pass, was a possibility, you've been being installed in the fall?
That would be the most aggressive timeline. We're looking to get everyone to agree to a group PBA as soon as possible. And then once that's secured, BAI would start the permitting and interconnection process. That takes, you know, depending on the project size, a month to three months, but something this size, it probably would take about a month. So you get permitting and interconnection done, and then they would secure the materials and then start the install. So, I mean, yeah, early, early fall, it could happen to be operating by the end of the year, certainly.
Was this talked about in the Climate Action, or Climate Action Committee? Yeah, okay, can you talk?
I know Alex and I know they had started communication, I was kind of in as well last year.
Yeah, way.
Yeah.
With Eric.
Yeah. It's been a while.
I would say over a year, even, yeah.
Yeah, it was before I started with Pennsylvania Solar Center, like, last February, so.
Because the first elementary question was, in a place like Pittsburgh where it's cloudy.
Yeah.
Is that even, do you, I know, right? I mean, Eric cleared that up, but that's kind of almost an obvious question.
Yeah.
How are we going to get solar power when the sun's never out? Although, I shouldn't say that today is beautiful.
Today was a beautiful day, but not all places. Not good.
This might be scratching their heads about that, because, you know.
I mean.
The thing that Forrest Hill said about, what, two years ago, I think it was, when they had developers, you know? And I was interested that they did it like a assessment of what this building would require, and it's really beautifully positioned to take advantage of solar on this building.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so it does work in Pittsburgh, not as well as, say, Denver. And we do enjoy pretty low rates, sort of like the city here, so it is harder to pencil. But if you're able to bring enough solar together, like we are, then you can get a rate that's lower than what you're currently paying.
I believe Eric said we've been producing about sixty percent. What if we make more electricity, is that about fifty percent, right?
I'd have to look at it again, but that sounds about right, yeah, yeah. And again, if there are other buildings or other available lands that, you know, aren't wooded, we'd certainly love to take a look at it and see if it could make some. But we can get you to a hundred percent of these facilities. I saw the EV chargers out there, so they've been installed for a little while now. And you've seen the increase in electric usage, or the metered separately, then.
Right.
Okay, so, you know, we could try to offset those as well, but we're kind of maximizing the space on those two, right?
I have a question. So for these rates to go through, everybody have to accept, is that correct?
Most of the burrows have to accept. We could have one or two drop off.
Okay.
Really, I mean, the anchor is probably Mount Lebanon right now. Their systems are pretty large. Admittedly, you know, Ross, we're having a meeting with Ross right now, actually, our Director of Programming, we do with them. So we want to get them on board, but they would be paying a little bit more. And actually, this BAI offer isn't as good for them, we'll say. There's another offer that's better, so. But I think there's enough solar. I calculated it without Ross Township. It's around one point six megawatts of solar being installed, and that would be enough, I think, to keep your nine-point rate going. And again, it could get better if we get the CPRG money in the summer.
Has there been any conversation with Duquesne Light?
Duquesne Light, they're not, they're like frenemies of solar, right? They'll love to put an electric charger out there for you, because you're going to spend more money and buy more electricity. They're not against it.
Okay.
And we're trying to work with them to find other pockets in other areas in Pittsburgh, in their territory, that would be helpful to have solar. Because their grid is constrained, there's capacity constraints.
That's my, that's my question.
If you could, if you can, if they would tell us where to put it, we could go out there and say, hey, this will be better for you and the grid, but we're just starting this out.
Okay, well, I've heard some things from some of the municipalities that the facilities have had in this area.
Yeah, I would say this system isn't large enough to really trigger too many issues. It's when you get into, say, Mount Lebanon five or over a megawatt, where you're going to need substantial grid upgrades to make people solar in, and that falls on the project. But that would be BAI paying for that. Your rate might increase, but we don't think there's any tangible issues at this point. And obviously, you'd have a chance to back out. If the rate balloons and it doesn't make any sense anymore, we just try to be unbiased source. We're not really trying to sell you anything. We'd love to get solar up, but if it doesn't make sense, if it doesn't make sense to the taxpayers, we don't want to do it.
Yes.
For that, you know, reputation for us and.
Any other questions?
All right.
So would we be able to get a yes from Churchill on this?
I think we have to discuss that. Right, yeah, we'll have to discuss that, because I I know that some of this information is new to some people, and I think people need to process and ask questions. And I'm sure Gavin has some questions as well.
I do, I mean, we represent a couple of other communities that are involved, and so we're just sort of digging into some of this. Well, so we are going to vote anyway next month.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
And just to be clear, the vote is to actually, like, approve the contract? No, it would just be the continued conversations with BAI as the lead developer. So contract negotiations would be, you know, a month or two down the line. What would you hand over to BAI if you wanted, like, a resolution, just a matter of something to this and maybe continue the discussion? Exactly, yeah.
Okay. Just to continue the discussion, BAI, yeah.
Seems very not the middle.
Yes, yeah.
Stepwise approach, and we could get contact language from BAI. I think there might actually be some from BAI, but if there's not, we could definitely get our hands on that, so you're able to vet it ahead of time, at least, yeah, so.
Yeah, like you said, today's our workshop where we discuss and then we vote. Next week, on a regular meeting.
Great, well, thank you for your time.
Awesome, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
For coming, thank you.
My dismissed.
Thanks. All right, Mr. Chief.
Yes, ma'am. We wanted to speak about the, or more specifically about the car, I guess, or?
Yeah, we could, yeah, let's talk about it, yeah, let's do it.
Okay, so I know we want to talk about the high school as well, so.
Wherever you would like to start.
What, it's totally right. To me, it doesn't really matter.
No, it doesn't matter, no.
Whatever you want.
Whatever you would like. Yeah, you can pick.
All right, so when it comes to the car, I know I had offered a letter last week, so much shame. And I know these cars are, they're not cheap, you know, when you completely up it, I'm looking up on sixty thousand dollars. So when, a couple of years ago, when the decision was made to solidify a line item budget and capital improvement plans, one of the things I did was create a fleet management plan then, because it, to basically put on paper something tangible to make it make sense. So what we're looking at now with the fleet management plan is for a car to be replaced every year. And with a five-car fleet, obviously, every five years, you know, a car would be up for auction at the five-year mark, right around upper nineties to a hundred and maybe a five thousand dollars. And the reason we chose that is if you look back at all the data that Ralph has, he maintains every time the cars go in for service, whether it's routine maintenance, the cars go in once a month, the tires get safety inspections, whatnot, but the routine maintenance, everything is all documented from the day we take delivery of it through the day we get rid of it. The five-year mark is right around, we start seeing the heightened bills coming in to maintain the cars, keep them running, put parts on them. So last year in 2023, the oldest car we have right now is the 2013 Ford Explorer. The reason that car's lasted as long as it has is primarily only one officer uses it, that's Officer Pines, because that was kind of a test. We, it was the only sport or cars we were able to purchase, and we quickly realized that it was far too small for the average. I mean, the equipment that goes overhead and whatnot, I mean, you're in there like a sardine can. So one officer used the car regularly on the night shift, Officer Pines. So the car was getting very limited use, so it's lasted as long as it has because of that. But currently, it's at eleven years old, so 2013. It has a hundred and ten thousand miles on the odometer, but there's a calculation you can do. The cars also store the number of hours the engine runs, idle hours, total running hours. The car has twelve thousand one hundred and seventy-five running idle hours on it, which there's an equation that the automotive industry uses to equate what that would be is if you were putting miles on the car. So it's seven miles to every hour the car has idle running time. So you imagine police cars, at scenes, events, whatnot, they sit and they idle for hours on end sometimes. So with that, if you calculate that out, it's eighty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-five miles that you have to add to the actual mileage on your odometer, to give a rough idea of how old the car is in the can. And that comes out to roughly a hundred and ninety-three thousand miles. So you're looking at a car who, it's kind of on borrowed time. We put six thousand dollars into it last year with a new rack and pinion steering and a new we had to put all-wheel-drive transfer case in it. So just last year, we were coming up on six grand. The total, I know there was a number in the agenda of twenty-four thousand five fifty-eight. That's from day one, eleven years later, all the engine oil, tires, everything, that, that, that number is, you know, I'm sure they're all put up there by the time the end of their life, but so, you know, if you, if you stay with the five-year plan, you get rid of the cars when they're still at their optimal value. As far as resale goes, we see some of our highest resale values around that mark, and then you're also getting rid of the cars before you start sending some, some state of mind. So that was the fleet management plan. I'd like to do our best to stay with that, because if you kind of kick the can down the road and you don't do it this year, and you wait till next year, it has the ripple effect, what it, where we've experienced it twice now, where at some point you have two cars well over a hundred thousand miles, and now we're starting to nick one down the left and right. There's liability, liability issues, the cars are down for service and maintenance. It's really hard to get parts for the cars these days. We've had, you know, when our car was damaged in the collision, it took four months to get the car back, just because we had to wait for the fender panel and just to ship. So those, those are just things that, ever since COVID, it's, you know, just getting cars is hard enough. Our last car took sort of a year to get it from the time we ordered it. So, and the other thing I did is, just on a note of trying to save as much money as possible, the, we bought our first Dodge Durango last year, which is significantly cheaper than even the cheapest Ford. The Ford is roughly around forty-six thousand for just the base model Ford, police interceptor. The Dodge Durango, we got for forty-one. So with the total outfit, I figure right around fifty-eight thousand, but it is, it's significantly cheaper than the Fords, and they're readily available as well, so you can get them in a relatively short period of time.
How quickly?
They have some available where I, she's, she's kind of a pain in the butt. She emailed me every week to find out what we're doing, so. Yeah, basically, that's it. So she actually emailed me this morning, after we were having a meeting, and I'd let her know, you know, next week how it goes. But they, they make it sound as if they have a few on the way, a few on the lot that haven't been claimed yet, so you could probably have a turnaround time. The biggest issue I think would be is the parts for the outfit. Yeah, so probably, but I wouldn't think it'd be more than maybe three or four months total, as opposed to what it's been, so.
Chief, how many cars do we have right now?
Right now, we have five. I'd like to, five is like the optimal number, because then we have one kind of in reserve, and then I also, I also created a a use rotation where, so we keep all the cars, one car doesn't get overused, one car gets sits. We have two officers assigned to, there's my car that I use primarily. They'll use it on certain details, since it's unmarked. But the two Ford Explorers and the Dodge Durango are on a rotation where two officers are assigned to each vehicle. So it'll get used for sixteen hours a day, sit for eight hours, and then the day that one officer's off, it'll sit for sixteen hours, only get used for eight. So it's kind of keeping.
A rotation, yeah, because if you don't know, people might say, well, we only have one or two officers at one time driving around.
Yeah.
Why do you need five cars?
Yeah, exactly.
But that, that you're explaining why.
Yeah, we have, right now, we have three officers on, so, but you have to have a car, there are, now and then we have four, but typically, it's three at the most. But when you have a car go down for service for any extended period of time, plus the simple fact of trying to not, you know, if we use the same car all the time, which is why I created, you know, some of the guys really love the hybrid. Some of the guys like the Dodge, and they just use it to death.
Right.
The other car sits, and then, so I kind of had to kind of divvy it up. But, yeah, I mean, it's just something to consider, because if we, if we do skip a year, you just need to know it, it's going to have that ripple effect where at some point, whether it's two, three, four years, we're probably going to be stuck with really needing two cars in there. So it wasn't long ago, last year, when our car was hit, you know, we had a car that was totaled during officer shelves.
Yes, and then not.
So we were really in trouble.
If I can, you know, the plan, the fleet management plan was put into place because you have to recognize that for years, the question of the car and the police car was always like this big giant debate. And what we saw happen every so many years is we wouldn't stick to a plan, it wasn't there, and then boom, we end up behind the eight ball, and it would cost us significantly more. So it's, you know, what went into the plan, and I think you've heard it from the chief, it was really trying to capture and maximize the savings for the constituents. So by putting it in a timeframe that we get the maximum value for the vehicles and in a timeframe where the minimum, minimum amount of outlay, right, capital outlay for the vehicles, it really positions us in a way that we are actually saving the most amount of money. Any shift from that, right, ends up putting us right back behind the eight ball, where we once again show up and we're rolling the dice, and all of a sudden, two cars go down, we don't have the capacity. So I would just, I would just point out that both in the kind of value to the constituents, along with kind of the thought and planning that went into that particular plan, it would be a mistake to deviate in any capacity from it. I think you've heard from the chief, the amount of work that he's done, both on the plan itself, but also, I think we all recognize, he goes out of his way to maximize the savings for us every day, all the time, including detailing vehicles, doing all kinds of extra stuff. So I don't think there's any question that we should have about the intention of the maximum savings in the borough.
And also to consider, when, if you keep that car too long, it's worth nothing.
Because you say ninety, ninety thousand, you, you goes off to auction at ninety, ninety to a hundred?
So the last two cars that we sold were one eighteen and one of six. So it's not, you know, you, you might go over that hundred thousand mark, but it's, you'll start to see.
Issues.
Well, along with the issues, when you put them up first, so we, just about every local way you can see anymore, well, actually, across the country, because it's in every state, there's a website called Municipal, where municipalities.
Yep.
And what, what, now I'll take the car home, when it's ready to go out of service, I'll take it home. We have the decals removed, and I'll take it home to an intense interior, exterior.
Can I drop my car off?
Yeah. But, but I, I've done, I did some bodywork on the one car and some paint and everything to repair some damage. But we're, we saw, the last two cars, we've seen incredible resale values. Now, part of that was because it was really hard to get it.
Yeah, yeah.
But we saw, like, the highest resale value for a car that was eight years old at the time was twelve thousand eight hundred. And if, what we actually paid for that car was probably in the mid-forties, back when. And if it, what we actually paid for that car was probably in the mid forties, back when we bought that, because it was in twenty sixteen. So if if you try to keep them right around a hundred thousand mark before they start, but like Jay was saying, the outlay on on maintenance and upkeep. Um, and then you also get that top resale value for them. The biggest thing with the cars uh that I'm looking at replacing, besides being. Eleven years old and the mileage, and if you take into account the idle hours and the money we put into it, um. The car, it was our last car that was also painted black and white. There's no wraps, there was no button wraps back then, so. Whoever buys that car would be, they'd be stuck with a black and white car. So as far as selling it goes. We'd be very lucky to get two thousand dollar Ford.
Oh, wow.
And what we talked with Michelle uh and Ralph about was, what if we kept that car? And then we stripped, you know, we took the decals and everything off and let Scott do the.
Yeah.
You know, because, and then he can use the car until it fails, and then, but it's better than using his truck.
Yep.
Um, and then all we'd have to do is take the lights and the decals off it, and then he would have a car to use and break, because like I said, the resale value would be.
Nothing, I think. Does anybody have any questions or other comments and thoughts about that?
No, having been around as long as Jay was, I I was here when the plan was made, and when it wasn't in place, and how. Hurry that got, so I'm very much in favor of it.
Yeah, and I mean, you never know, like accidents happen, things happen.
What happened to our brand new car?
Exactly, well.
That was an anomaly.
We're not renumbering any cars that year, right?
That car came back and it still has that number on it.
Can we add another number?
We make it like a, you know.
Start crossing it out?
Yeah.
All right, um, that's the one thing, and I know you had something else you wanted to.
Yeah, so um, as far as what happened at high school the other day, because you know, the the media was still involved one night. Um, so just a a basic um rundown of how that occurred, you know, both art school district and gateway have received bomb threats. Um. It's really common these days that we receive them by social media, they're very vague, they're very hard to determine where they came from, if they're credible. I in forty, because I spoke to the mineral chief about it too, and he's been around a lot longer than me, in forty some odd years. There are yet to be an actual bomb. So we, this this first ones, it's been quite a while, we decided to err on the side of product and. We evacuated the students, we got the buses there early, we got them out enough time for myself and two six, our um six two man teams. Along with the fire department to clear the building, but in reality, like, it's a needle and a haste, like, what are you looking for, an unattended package? You know, like an unattended book bag, it's not like an airport, you know, I mean, there's a million nooks and crannies, you really have no. Unless it was like the Roadrunner Coyote, you know, dynamite strapped together. Yeah, you really don't know with it. So we went through with a with an explosive dog. Uh, the problem was we only had about fifty minutes to do that, because obviously we didn't want to be in the building at twelve seventeen, they they gave a specific time at twelve seventeen. So we didn't want anyone, including us, in the building at twelve seventeen, so we did what we could to clear it out. Um. It went extremely well, the buses were the biggest hurdle, because they're used to their afternoon run, they get a call at eleven thirty, say, hey, we need you all to come into work right now. Get to the high school, get these kids out of here, but surprisingly, they were able to do that. There was only a handful of kids out front at twelve seventeen, still waiting for bus. Um, but all in all, it went extremely well. Um, the school district was very pleased with the way it happened. Um, they gave us, you know, the 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 superintendent, as well as the the public safety coordinator, gave us, you know, high marks on how it was handled. You know, so it couldn't have gone any better on that front, and then of course, um. Officer Lewandowski, he's a, he's a go getter, he he took the ball and ran with it, he got the screen name, he started typing up search warrants. The search warrants led to IP addresses for computers, which came back to computers belonging to. What ended up being the student who reported the bomb threat to administration, ended up being an account registered in. And what it turned out to be is he was at Forbes Botek. Uh, the Gateway bomb threat happened, some of his cohorts and 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 fellow students were talking about, it'd be great to get out early, out of school early today. He went off to the bathroom, typed up the bomb threat using an I a Instagram account. Sent it to himself and then screenshotted it, sent it to administration at the school and said, hey, I just saw it on a kid's phone, took a screenshot, we have a bomb threat, yeah. So he came back to the school the night with the administration, he goes, yeah, I was a kid in Forbes, I don't know who it was, and. After we got the search warrant resolved back and everything, we brought him in the next day, and I mean, he confessed, so um. I don't think anybody has, it was technically a felony, because it was a cause of evacuation of the school. Um. We had a long discussion with the the, he's an eighteen year old student, he's also, um, he has an IP, I U P, so. I don't think the school, I think they, it was more of a, we wanted to do it to kind of put the message out there that, listen, we can find out who you are.
Yeah, right.
It 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 takes some late work, but we'll find out who you are at some point. Now, the Gateway one got traced back to New Jersey. So I don't know how or why that came about.
Sure.
Um, yeah, there might have been like a public computer where people use the VPN or something. Yeah, so our our subsequently, our actor though wasn't, you know, that, you know, technical about it, so we were. So we arrested him, um, spoke to his parents, I really don't think the school is gonna be all too hellbound on pursuing this as far as it can go, I think. They'll probably give him a period of probation, I don't know if we'll be able to get rid of it altogether, because it was a felony. Uh, even if we moved it to a misdemeanor and just gave him probation, that'll be up to the courts, but um, yeah, I mean, all in all, when it could as it possibly could.
How many municipalities were involved besides Churchill?
For.
To that went to the school.
Oh, uh, so it was us, Wilkins Township, Forest Hills, Wilkinsburg, and then. Court authorities sent their explosives though, because they were the quickest one really available. The only other one we could have gotten was from the county police out of the airport. Um, yeah, and then Ralph came up with Scott, and then the other Scott, and we just kind of split up into teams, we covered different segments in the buildings.
Sure, who organizes, you've got all these people coming in to scour the the.
I did, I mean, I just.
So you just.
Well, the nice thing about it's not like the active shooter thing where it's it's happening now in real time, and things are in chaos, it's. You know, we kind of brought everybody in, we all congregated, we broke up into teams, we assigned different parts of the building. Again, the biggest issue was though, is we only had a short period of time to do that. Um. You know, which is in some ways kind of comforting, because you think you're, you were at least safe till twelve seventeen, you just get a bomb threat, or you could go off at any point. Yeah, so.
Yeah.
But um, yeah, I mean, all in all, it was uh, it it went well, and and the school district's extremely happy with the way it worked out, and I too, you know, those few times you get tested. Um, you like to know that everything's working like it should, so.
Well, thank you.
To say something to you, I mean, we all are so grateful for our police force and you. And I think sometimes it's important to hear from the outside people, and I have in front of me, and I'm gonna read it very quickly. Um, the day after that happened, the superintendent said, he he sent this out to everybody. Yesterday, the Churchill Police responded swiftly and stayed until the campus was completely empty. They led this investigation through the night, and without their assistance, it would have taken weeks to get the information. This collaboration and commitment to ending this online behavior will continue, and when necessary, will be pushed to the fullest extent of the law. And also, the district safety security coordinator said, their rapid response arriving at the high school within ten minutes of being called. Was the first step in our decisive action plan. In consultation with the law enforcement, we determined that the safest course of action was to evacuate. A thorough sweep of the building was conducted by multiple police agencies in a K nine unit under the expert direction of Chief. Acker, um, excuse me, Ackerly, and the Churchill Police Department. This operation ensured the building was secure. Only concluding once all students had safely departed from the premise. The investigation of the bomb threat led by Officer Lewandowski of the Churchill Police Department was conducted with remarkable diligence. Within twenty-four hours of the initial threat, Officer Lewandowski, in collaboration with our high school administration, myself, successfully identified and apprehended the individual. Uh, responsible. I cannot overstate the complexity and urgency of investigating a threat of this nature. Especially one disseminated through the social media. The professionalism and thoroughness displayed by Officer Lewandowski and all involved. Were truly commendable, and we really appreciate everything you guys, and I just think it's important for our residents. To hear that, not just to hear it from us, I mean, say, you know, that was really some, something, what what everyone did. Thank you.
That'd be scary walking in the building.
They say the bomb's gonna go off at twelve seventeen, but there's gotta be something small back in your mind, like.
Is that daylight savings time?
Yeah. Yeah, specifically speaking, you'd like to think that um, the chance of it actually being a bomb would be slim to none, but. Yeah, and it's kind of like the police pride, what's from, you know, moving forward after that, it's like, so you start getting more of them. And then you you stop evacuating the building, and then all it takes is to even bring up smoke bomb and and throw it in the hallway.
It only takes one, that's right.
So that was the best part of the arrest um coming out of it, is that now it got, it has the kids thinking. Oh, maybe we can't do, maybe, you know, and and they think twice about it, and we kind of nip that in the bud.
Absolutely, yes, right.
And everyone's probably, I mean, by now you've heard that uh, the um, the student that was found guilty of that worked for us last summer.
Oh, that's right.
He was, I mean, he was, everyone who was involved with him was a good kid.
He worked for the.
He worked like really crazy, he'd dig all that stuff in the back and cleared all his land out. He was a hardworking kid, honest. Stupid decision.
I think he's stupid decision, he, like I said, he has an I U P, has some deficiencies, I think that'll be taken into consideration, but he was also smart enough. To generate a uh a a fake account using mom's computer with a different name, so he was calculated enough where he has to, to some degree, you'd be known.
Yeah.
We'll see on.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. You guys might as well. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay, that are the self people online right now viewing. So, just, I know sometimes we forget to mention that, um, that there are self residents.
They being able to hear us.
Yes. Yeah, we haven't gotten anything so far, so so far so good, I did ask about that. All right. Yes, we'll go back to uh. Three, special items. Any questions about that? Minutes.
Yep.
Um, all right, moving on to number four, uh. I know those were all the the binder, anybody have any questions about the agency reports?
I will say that brought the property safety council, it's the first time.
It's so good.
So good.
Yeah, a lot of work and effort into it, so.
All right, moving on to number five, uh, discussing the possibility of appointing Rory Carroll to the Churchill Area Environmental Council.
Yes, um, we are amazingly fortunate to have uh an individual. Apply to join the the um, um. What were you just saying?
Council, I know it's a council.
Uh, Rory P. Carroll is a PhD at University of Pittsburgh, and uh he has. Uh, it's in earth and environmental science, I think all of you have this in your in your binder. Uh, I'm just thrilled that somebody with the level of responsibility and training and experience that he has had in environmental issues. Would step forward and and want to serve, I think that's fantastic, so I'm of course all in favor, so welcome.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? All right, thanks Diane. Uh, well, the next one's a finance committee, we did discuss the new police vehicle. That will be on the agenda for voting for next week. There's some information there of how much it is, it would cost, which is a lot less.
I thought honestly.
Than I thought one.
Eighty or ninety.
Yeah, and I think in the midst of COVID, those were the numbers that we were getting.
Yeah.
Uh, and now the numbers are starting to go down, demand, yay, and yeah, it's a good thing.
One of the best things to me was, how long was that the judge that we waited for that car that, you know, like a year?
Like, you're over a year.
The fact that he found a a source and shared with us what he's learned about the various types of cars, that's. Having that pipeline started with that, with that source is really great.
And I know from talking with the chief last year, trying to get that car, he called them a lot.
Make one note, under finance committee, it's fifteen, my tenth and later today, and I sent an email to all the council members. We were awarded a forty-eight thousand some dollar grant with the D C D for a five year management. Strategic plan with our capital improvement program, so.
What's D C D, explain?
And Department of Beauty Economic Development.
Okay, just so people have them.
The state and.
Too many acronyms.
We have to remember, they don't know.
Awarded that to help us with our five year capital improvement plan.
Congratulations, Michelle. And Ashley.
Yeah. All right, moving on to seven, uh, public safety, the ride along policy.
Yeah, um, Gavin addressed that the last time, and I think that, you know. Michelle did her homework with the insurance company, I just don't think that we can do it, and it's a shame, because he would love to, and the chief would love for us to.
Absolutely.
But this is not the first time that some kind of uh fun has been spoiled by.
Yeah, we we have, we have to be careful, we have, we have to protect, um, and like you said, insurance. As as great as it would be, and I think it would be a great opportunity, and. Uh, liability, it's a very, very big concern, and we need to protect our residents, and we need to protect.
Yeah.
Ourselves, ourselves.
Clarity of, you know, this is a scenario unless the insurance would not cover. It'd be coming straight from our taxpayers.
Yeah, so if something were to happen, that would be falling on the taxpayers. It's not fair, it's not fair.
No.
That's too much.
We'd love to ride around.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we.
It's a shame.
It's a shame, but.
Diane, you would have turned up with an alternative to that ride along, remember I talked about?
Yes.
And I and I talked with the chief about this too, and he's he's on board with it. In instead of going on and riding along, I talked to the chief that, um, maybe one of the days before a workshop, we come in at six thirty or something. On a nice day when it's still bright outside, don't have a police car running back in the uh at the parking lot, and he can show us everything that's in that police car. How things work, but this is a mobile office, this is all this, this is all that, and I don't know.
Nobody touches it.
Touch the fire, I want to hear the boo boo, I want the sound.
I think that's a great idea, it's a great idea.
I think that could be maybe beneficial for anyone who's not seen the inside of the police car, or at least a long time. See how how it operates, but we know.
But in the front seat, best.
Thank you. All right, uh, next on the agenda is infrastructure.
Yeah, uh, let's cover the the planning commission case first, okay?
Yeah, I mean, I I don't, maybe Dennis would be gonna give one.
Yeah, he's on. Yeah, he's on.
He did the plan review, I think he'd be all.
Good evening, Dennis.
Hi, Dennis.
Welcome back.
Are you guys able to hear me fine?
So we're talking about the planning commission ap- application for that uh property line change.
Yeah, so that that was a fairly simple um application, it was just uh the property line was being moved. For the purposes of just someone's driveway and the wall for their driveway was built a little close to the property line. So it was a fairly simple plan review. Um, we had one um. One uh comment letter, all comments from our side were approved. Um, it was sent to the county planning, county had a had a few minor comments mainly about how it needed to be signed at the end of the day. And uh, and those uh were to be approved as well, so there there are no further comments. Um, from our side regarding uh regarding that application.
Great, CCTV contract? Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I can speak to that as well, so uh, we talked about last month bidding out CCTV. Last year was year three of the three year contract, uh, we bid it out again as a, as another potential three year contract. Uh, bids were received at the end of last. Uh bids were received at the end of last week. We did receive four bidders. Um the quantities um are uh somewhat hypothetical. They're based on. What we know we have to do in order to maintain our requirements as well as typically we'll televise for road paving programs. Or for other things as they come up throughout the year. So that's what the quantities are all based off of. And based on that, we're able to get a uh a a cost amount that we're able to compare one bidder to another. With that, um the low bidder uh is expected to be state pipe services. That is actually the contractor that has performed the work over, I believe, the last six years or maybe even longer in Churchill. So they are familiar with municipality and they've done a done a good job at that. That uh contract amount, and I'll make sure everybody has the recommendation letter and the actual amounts in the in your packet for next week. But their uh amount for the first year was one hundred and eleven thousand twenty-four dollars. And the next three ranged from a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. So um the e- especially the top two were were pretty close in range. And they're the the two typical contractors that perform this work in the area. So we did feel comfortable with this bid. That one hundred and eleven thousand does not mean that's what's expected to be um spent again. That will be determined based on actual work authorizations or uh work orders that are provided to the contractor throughout the year. Um and with that, this the same contractor actually had the low bid for each of the subsequent years as well for twenty twenty-five. And twenty twenty-six. So with that, uh we we would be recommending state pipe services for the award of that contract.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, there's just one thing I wanted to add about the committee. In January, Danny couldn't be with us. Uh and so we asked a wonderful job. I hope you feel that that's the case of uh putting together a sort of a workshop. For our committee meeting that went over what the whole system is and provided really great examples. Real life examples in the borough of all different kinds of.
That's great. That's awesome.
So it was, it was really, I think, a really good thing for him to do. So I'm gonna give him kudos for that.
Thank you, Ralph. Alright, moving on to our next mini communications.
Communications, um I'm gonna start with the owl.
Yes.
We've had, everyone knows we've had difficulties in the past. Um we were ready to ditch it. Because the most important thing is being able to communicate with our residents. And if you if you can't see us and you can't hear us. But um it's not really the owl itself. Ashley has just tried everything with the manufacturers, what have you. They feel it's more of this room and uh the outside noise all around, so. Um we thought, this is Michelle's idea, maybe if we shut all the doors everywhere where we're more secluded here. That maybe that could be the answer. So until we have a problem again, we're giving it one more shot. And from what I can tell today, seems like ma- and maybe it'll work because we're not having any problems. If we do have problems again, then the best solution is to record it and twenty-four hours later. You can, you can, we will post it, you can watch it. And if you have an urgent. Urgent matter that you don't wanna wait twenty-four hours, we are right around the corner. Come on in and, you know, we're all here after the meeting's over. We're happy to talk to everybody. But because we wanna make it as as, you know, efficient as possible. So that's what we're doing with the owl.
And I know Ashley, we talked to a lot of the trouble feeding she did, but she sat on with the support phone. I'll take them and I've sat at every chair of this table and productive my voice. So that they can report, they reported it and they can actually like see how the sound is coming in. And it could be anything else, you know, if you don't move down from down from the. Must be right on the the parkway right here as well, so it's a lot of different.
New windows with how.
White and brown noise fan that the back of the.
Yeah, we got a projector right there.
Putting it out there.
But she has spent countless hours. How.
Thank you for doing.
We have done your due diligence and more, but enough's enough. So let's hope that this was the solution, but if it's not, we're gonna just report it and twenty-four hours you will get. Watch and hear it.
Thank you. Working hard on that, yes.
Um a few other things about communications, our newsletter's coming out uh right around the first of April, so look for that. Um uh dates of note, March thirtieth is the Easter Bunny Parade. I know we've spoken about it. It's on our website, very, very important, popular thing in Churchill. So that's my Saturday, March thirtieth, the day before Easter. Um a couple other uh important dates, as you may know, we've talked about this. This is our ninetieth anniversary of Churchill. We will have a night um an extra special celebration at our annual Churchill dinner. And that will be May nineteenth. This will be in the newsletter. Um we'll be putting it on social media soon and you can send a check, call, call the borough. Uh with a credit card, um stop in, pay, pay the money. It is May nineteenth. It is a Sunday, five P M. Denunzio's in Monroeville. So that's an important date. And then, of course, down the road and the summer, toward the end of summer, Saturday, August tenth. Is our. Well, this is really the heavy time for the rec board of all the planning. It starts to by June, kinda settle down. It all has to be planned. So everybody, um I am, I put my record hat on now. Um we've been meeting a lot more at this time. Because there's so many things that have have to happen right now. So but it's coming along really well. We always hope for a really good day. And uh so that's Saturday, August tenth. And I think that's all I have as far as communications.
We we need to look at the bunny's parade schedule to see how, you know, review it again to make sure like.
Parade schedules on the website.
Time wise, so we know.
It's a slightly different schedule than um the Santa parade. Um we have a few, we always have a few more streets. Cause we don't have, yes, we don't have the fire truck. Cause there were some streets, it's just too difficult. So, yes.
We also discussed that meeting too, that um um during the bunny parade, not only are we gonna pass out the kit, the treats. But a flyer announcing those three different things.
We were gonna announce. Community Day. There was one other thing. Michelle. Oh, I was it, well, this is part of my climate action, but we were talking.
Was it the meeting? There was a workshop?
I mean, a a town meeting. Yes, this.
Talking about having a a town meeting.
And are we gonna have someone to help pass that on?
The bunny might just have to pass it on herself.
I think the bunny needs a. Bunny helper. A bunny helper.
Maybe we could, maybe we could see if we can get someone else to ride with us in the police car.
Yes. Actually, a youngster with a lot of energy.
And the older I get.
Bad bad by about three hours into it, so.
The bunny's so happy to come to Churchill, so. I think that was the third, we're we're, we'll pass out information to our um our residents, yeah.
Perfect. We're done. Uh the next thing is climate action committee, which we already talked about.
We did.
Is there anything else that we wanted to add on there?
I mean, we are thinking of having a a a town meeting. This was Michelle's suggestion to talk about, you know, our five-year action plan. And um we had a really, really good meeting with Connect and Jess, our intern, who um is kind of, she's taken all. She's taken all the data that she's been collecting and uh about um greenhouse and gas inventory data. And she's putting it all together and we're not gonna change the world with just our climate action plan, but if we just have this information. And I've said this before, where we can help our residents make some better choices, help our community, all that helps. And ultimately will help us get more grants when they see that we have done so much. In fact, Connect said of all their municipalities, we're one of the few that is already doing a a climate act. Like we're ahead of the game now just by doing something like that. I mean, we've made already some great changes that is all part of that. Like when you go to show people, hey, look what we've done, LED, the E V V stations, which by the way, they're occasionally, we're seeing. Using them, you know, and that's our future. So so that's good. So we've been doing a lot of things already that that will all contribute. Oh, and the action, right, the active transportation plan, but all these things are very helpful ultimately when we we go to ask for grants. Cause more grant money we can get more.
The more we can do.
Um oh, and and one other thing, there's in in the newsletter, there's going to be a survey. Um I think Jess talked to you, you think, you wanna talk a little bit about the survey?
In the survey or in the newsletter, there's gonna be a survey about how residents could. Or we would like to see residents reduce submissions. How to reduce the public footprint and different things we as the borough could do or how you would like to see other people.
Okay, it'll be a QR code and just take it, you know, we just wanna hear from people, suggestions, questions, what have you. And and Connect is gonna be working with us with the survey, so.
I'm also curious how that survey, one, how many people will take it. Curious. And two, if that is a good method moving forward for our residents, if we wanna have other surveys.
You know what, that really is a great, you know, we have something like.
Active transportation survey we did, we can get about a hundred and seventy people.
You can get ten percent.
If you can get three percent.
You can put that QR code on Facebook as well.
Well, I mean, if you're already on Facebook, you probably just want the link. You don't need a QR code if you're already on Facebook. Yeah, you can't like, if you're already on your phone or something, you can just click on the link.
Right.
Yeah. So on your phone trying to take picture, QR code. Ten percent return on the visioning plan that we did in twenty twenty, which they thought was pretty good. As part of that, yeah. Ad hoc beer committee, yes. I have news. I love news.
But Michelle and I worked on defining uh the mission of the beer committee at this point. Uh and we had advertised for people who'd like for participate. One of the things that we're doing is trying to attract people who've not had involvement in the borough before. Who have specific skills to bring to the table in horticulture and landscaping and to some extent scientific research. Our goal is to provide the best possible information we can to residents about how to protect themselves, their health and their properties. And that's where we're headed.
And Michelle, can you speak a little bit on uh? How it was advertised for people that are interested in this?
Um there were email blocks sent out, we've done a Facebook, Instagram and our website as well. And we are accepting interested email or however you wanna pitch up to us, interested applicants until the fifteenth.
Thank you.
How many have you gotten so far, president? And you want five?
I'd like, well, ideally, it would be a total of eight people around the table, but it's gonna take some time to generate that interest. We talked about that they'd like to have. Representation from all the areas of the borough. So that might take some time to get that done.
Thank you for that update. Um, purpose out here, so much to the education of. Uh Mister Mayor.
One of the things I talked with with to uh with Michelle about this is when, when a message is sent out, is to make sure that we all get that message and read it. I noticed now, I don't know if it's always been there, but there's that little smiley face or a thumbs up. So you can reply if she sends something out. You hit that, so she knows you got that message. And I get that will work all around. Anytime someone sends you out a message, cause I'm I'm constantly, did I miss something? What's going on? So if we know that everyone's getting what? If it's a committee meeting or whatever it is, that we all at least receive, that I I do know that some people say thanks.
Yeah.
The chief and I have gotten into that, like anytime he sends me something, I always make sure I send back. So you know that everybody's getting it. And I know sometimes it can be difficult in being new councilor.
Navigating. No, perhaps if we could reply to the person that sent it versus to reply all. Because if I see something and I see ten, got it, good job, good job, I'm not gonna follow down the list. And and what happens is, I'll see her remark, her remark, his remark, his remark, your remark. But I never see what the message was.
And everybody communicates differently, right? Like Michelle knows. That I am not great at teams. So if she meets me. Or she'll be, I'll be like, just text me and tell me that there is a message that I need to view.
Because I will answer your texts. Michelle sent something. I said, okay, great. And she says, this is my number. Cool. I says, oh, got it. Then I got something from you. Um you're gonna get such and such and so and so contact. I says, oh, let me see what Michelle. I would have never saw the email.
Exactly.
Tech, if you really wanna talk to me, text me.
Everybody communicates differently.
Emails, it's, it's. No, I don't, I just, I can't, I can't do that, I'm sorry.
The only thing I'm making about text, text messages on your personal text message, take it away.
Yeah, if you're, everyone's, folks are using your phones for uh to discuss council business, you gotta be careful, those are all public records.
No, it was, she was very careful. She said, call her. And then when I called her, she gave me the straight guess. I says, now what you do is email me. Send me the packet and, you know, so we're all adults and we understand it and we get it, but to follow that. And every board I sit on, I can't, I I don't like the chitter chatter.
These messages are all public too, and they should not be having a group chat.
Well, not to make decisions.
You told us to stop that. I saw that.
Message was, we need to chat more on Teams.
I'm acknowledging that, hey, I sent you a message. Did you receive it? I think it's mostly that. However, also it's twofold and everybody communicates differently. And I think we all just need to be cognizant of how we all communicate with each other and what's everybody's preferred communication method.
But to your point, when it says, when somebody says something and then we don't all have to reply all the same. Or like, great job, Rob.
I missed, no, I got your message that something was canceled and I thought it came from her. And so I missed that meeting. I didn't go to that meeting. It's too much chatter. I'm sorry.
It can be confusing. I know when I send things out.
So she says, no, it wasn't. I said, it was, oh, it was yours that was canceled.
We got confused, yeah.
I experienced it with garden, with garden club. When I send out something for garden club, I don't know if everybody's getting my message, to know what says it then.
Just to you.
So make sure that it's a reply. Email reply to the person that sent it.
Some emails can be B C C. Especially when it talks about certain things.
Yes.
That way people can't repile.
Right, right. Right?
Yeah, just. Yeah.
On the way, anything that's on our way.
I will not ask for gift cards.
She says, read and and I was, and I saw it because it was so fast. It said, are we gonna do something for the staff? I was like, oh, that's cool. And then when I, I said, I'll get back to you tomorrow. And the next day I responded and the person told me, well, we're gonna do something for the. And the person told me, well, we're gonna do something for the staff and you're gonna get one too. And I says, you're gonna get one too. I says, wait a minute, this doesn't sound right. I don't need a gift card. I called Ashley, I says, something wrong with the bear.
If that happens to you, check the email.
Didn't make sense, but it came into.
The mayor is nice enough if you would actually do that, that's scary. Be like, yeah, I'm giving everyone gift cards.
Get one, so respond.
Uh, Ashley grabbed it real quick. She sent me a note. She's, you can add, and she said, I'll take care of it.
It's always, it's always the mayor.
Right.
People like to per- like pretend to be him, so if you ever get a message, don't hesitate to tell.
Oh, yeah.
Know.
Right.
You get to know people after a while, I think.
Anything else, sir?
Yes, yes, yeah. Um, Deb already talked about the community day dinner. I'm gonna throw out the golf uh or golf outing for Rotary. Or Rotary rather, uh, May twenty-eighth, so the big, well-attended event.
Always gets sold out.
Always gets sold out. I think last year, a hundred and forty golfers.
Right.
Plus the dinner.
Fundraiser all year.
Right, the high school play is on, it's the musical, I forget what it's called.
Wonderland.
Wonderland.
There's only two high schools in the country that have gotten permission to to Wonderland. And uh, Woodland Hills is one of them. Yes.
So for that's for that. Um, the thing I wanted to mention about the high school was the sign that we had a little problem with. I noticed, I noticed when I ride by at night, the sign is not glaring out like it was.
Good, yes.
The district, I don't know that they find a an absolute solution for it. But at least the guy across the street can get some sleep at night. That was a good thing.
Yes.
The Bullets Bend Park, I still want to keep that, you know, kind of on the burners. The enough, the warmer weather's coming out, we should be able to get down there and do some work as soon as Ralph thinks it's safe enough to go down there and do some work. Keep working on that.
Well, we have an official opening of that. I mean, I know it's already sort of open, but.
Yeah.
Or is we're just gonna say.
Really not ready to, you know, there's too much work that needs to be done.
And I think one of the things was where it was moving the the chain. Up a little farther, rather than like you drive all the way down there and then there's a chain and it's really hard to turn around to get back up. So we could put that in on on the on the agenda. Also, one of the other things I've been doing, took it up on my own, it's our ninetieth anniversary. It's probably a little bit too late, but better late than never. So I've started asking different people to write things about um the borough, their experiences. I contacted all the groups, the the garden clubs and the the stamp club and so on. And I um, the the bunny in the past, who was the bunny, you know, before Deb was the bunny.
I know the bunny.
You know the bunny. But that little girl down on Marbury, she knows. I could have, anyway, um, so, and I talked to someone today, uh, Linda Crins, who lives on Thornberry. Her husband grew up in this area. So I said, asked her if he could write uh like a kind of like a a story about his memories of of Churchill when he was growing up here. Because she was telling me he lived on Fenwick and they could climb over the fence and go up into this collecting house property and play around up there. So hopefully, they'll, you know, come up with some things that we can compile a big pamphlet about our boroughs. I I've been telling people like June first would be a deadline. I don't know that that'd be enough time to put it all together. But if not for our ninetieth, maybe for our ninety-fifth, that will all be ready, ready to go.
But even some old pictures.
Yeah, I've been asking for pictures.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah. Still gotta call that woman with the Ferris, you know, the cavern on the bike. They were supposed to get in touch with, and I haven't heard anything from them yet. I'll give them a call and see what's going on. Um, and the last thing is, I'm still collecting plastic. I see my bins full out there and the tennis shoes. I see there's tennis shoes there. So thank you in advance. We only need eight hundred more pounds of plastic.
And we get what?
We get a bench.
The bench, that's.
And then the next decision will be where on our property do we put the bench?
Oh, right.
It's a, it's a trax.
Yeah.
It's plastic that manufactured wood. We'll put that out there.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're doing good with that. And the tennis shoes, so far we've gotten eleven uh sixteen dollars. Do they go to someplace that are recycled?
Right.
They can, if they're usable, they actually pay you a little bit for it. If they're not, they don't get thrown into a landfill. Somehow, they're they're breaking them down and using all the parts, but they have to be a, what they say, non-athletic wear. No, no non-athletic wear, except. There's a bag I I, oh, Ashley's been great to go up and take care of that for me.
Thank you.
So when you're cleaning out your closets. And that's it.
Uh, any council staff comment?
Comment, yeah. Um, on the connect, twenty-three, Michelle, will we be able to see what the budget would look like when we go solar? Uh, what's, you know, but how the, how will it affect the budget?
I think there's some numbers to get on that show.
You can see, you know, what's the savings there.
Yeah. So they're only saying it's going to affect sixty of them, so I'll have to reach out to them and see, but I'll get back.
I'd like to see what that would be.
Yeah.
Doesn't look like anything, you know, just what that, what a saving, the type of a save.
Anybody else?
I have a couple, please.
Yeah, go ahead. No, you're good.
Um, I want to alert everyone, there was a scam a few days ago with Pendleton Water Authority.
Yeah.
They were getting calls that um, your water bill is delinquent, we're gonna shut it off or um, you know, we need your credit card, blah, 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 blah. And they want to make it clear they would never ever take payments on the phone. If you get anything like that, just hang up. But that's the latest scam that's been going around. Um, also, I want to thank the litter picker-uppers who last week picked up and the mayor was one of them, eleven huge hefty bags. Which drives me crazy that there's that much. And I know, Mayor, you said, and it wasn't even like, it wasn't even in a big area, right?
And and we revised that number, it was two more bags were added, so thirteen, thirteen bags altogether. It's Kevin and that uh Quinevere did underneath the bridge down here. We did, we just did from the parkway entrance right here on the corner, all the way out before you get on the parkway.
Wow.
I mean, what is, what is up with that? There were even baby diapers.
Yeah, baby diapers. A big one is those plastic bottles. If there was ever a reason to ban a plastic bottle.
No, right.
So many plastic bottles.
Thank, um, and one more thing about the Woodland Hills Wonderland, the dates, I think the tickets are going on sale this week sometime, so you can call Woodland Hills. But the dates are, it's April twenty-fifth to the twenty-seventh and May second to four. Two to four, so those are the dates of Wonderland, gonna be probably, I think it's gonna sell. They do such wonderful.
It does have one in the newsletter. For their.
Okay, great.
Perfect.
Good, yeah.
Those. If you haven't seen those programs, those, you may have never gone, it's like. And it's all municipalities and local businesses and so on.
No, but the students do so that that's a job. Yeah, so. Oh, one more thing.
Yeah.
Resident packets. We have resident packets. Uh, we are behind in the people who've moved here in the past couple of years because of COVID. But anybody can come up here, it's a wealth of information about our borough. You can come up here and get a packet. Uh, Michelle and Ashley spend a lot of time, as you know, redoing it and they're here. So if anybody ever wants, you you don't have to be a new resident because there's just so many, there's so much good information.
I think we have it online too.
And it's online.
And I, and I, I will be back at.
Yeah, email.
I will be back at in person. I know it's been a while, like Deb said. But, you know, Ashley's been updating it. We had a lot of personnel changes, so we have made changes to that packet. So she's got those all together and I will pick them up tonight. And with the weather getting a lot nicer and we get an extra hour daylight next week, we'll be out and about through the borough.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
So, one.